Good evening. My name is Adnan Zabir and I am a senior at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. I've participated in the Debate and Speech Club, the Muslim Student Association, Martial Arts, and the National Honor Society. And also have taken four advanced placement classes over my four-year tenure in high school, including AP Computer Science, AP Chemistry, AP Physics, and AP English Language and Composition. And have been able to maintain a GPA of 3.86. I enjoy giving service to others by participating in neighborhood cleanups or simply by tutoring my younger brothers in their school assignments. I am also a nominee of the U.S. Department of State Yes Abroad Program which I was a semifinalist in. My long-term goal is to become a computer engineering major and eventually open my own business which deals with app development. I'm a proud senior at Eleanor Roosevelt High School and I'm ready for college. Now, I want to welcome you to the March 22nd, 2016 Prince George's County Board of Education Meeting. Highlights this evening will include the news break "Green Eggs Make For Tasty Reading." Additionally, under the consent agenda, the Board of Education will address several proclamation and observances, including School Library Month, Mathematics Awareness Month, Earth Day, and National Autism Awareness Month. Please continue to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming Board of Education meetings and events. And now, the March 22nd, 2016 Board of Education Meeting will begin. Thank you.
Good evening. And welcome to the March 22nd, 2016 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I would like to thank Amon Zabir, 12th grade student at Eleanor Roosevelt High School, for the introduction to the Board Meeting this evening. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices as they interfere with the microphone and taping of the meeting. Dr. Anderson, can you lead us in board prayer and a pledge of allegiance?
Oh God, be praised to minister that which is just in all educational policies. Never mind of your guidance. Steer us to action with love, wisdom, and peace.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Hopkins, could you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Anderson? Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Epps?
Here.
Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs? Ms. Quinteros Grady? Ms. Roche? Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mr. Wallace? Ms. Williams?
Present.
Ms. Perry?
Present.
Ms. Boston? Dr. Eubanks? Thank you.
Colleagues, may I have a motion to adopt the March 22nd, 2016 Budget Meeting Agenda? Excuse me, hold on.
Madam.
Ms. Epps?
Just wanted to know if we could, I don't know if we have any, but wanted to slip in a comment on non-budget agenda items, I mean, non-agenda items with the comments on agenda item. So can I offer that as a friendly amendment?
I'm sorry, I'm not really clear what you're saying.
Is this the agenda?
I can't hear you.
Oh, is this the agenda that we're doing? I just wanted to offer a friendly amendment to allow for comments from agenda items and non-agenda items?
And properly move to second? Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any more? I need a second for the, to prove the amendments as amended.
Ms. Boston, excuse me? We need to adopt the agenda as amended.
That's what I just said.
Oh, okay, I couldn't hear you.
I needed to get a second for it first. Okay, y'all are all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the March 10th, 2016 Board Work Session Minutes? All those in favor? We would now have a news break entitled "Buying Into Financial Literacy."
My son says it's delicious, so.
Have you tried it?
No, I have not. I serve. I don't eat it.
Does it taste pretty good?
It tastes really good.
Well, I like the ham, but not the, but not the green eggs.
I think I could do the ham. I don't know if I could do the green eggs. I don't know.
There's no doubt about it. If you eat with your eyes, as chefs say we do, there are few dishes less appetizing than a plate full of green eggs and ham. But for the fifth year in a row, the parents and teachers at University Park Elementary School served up those colorful vittles, Dr. Seuss's signature dish, to Celebrate Read Across America Day. With cafeteria tables sprouting susical trefoila trees, children chapeouled like the cat in the hat, and a thing or two running about, it was a celebration of a gifted wordsmith whose famous rhymes have reasons.
If you look at green eggs and ham, it's really about being adventurous and really giving something a try, even though I have not become adventurous yet, but the character Sam is really trying something that he's never done, even after going above and beyond to never eat the green eggs and ham. In the end, he tries it and loves it.
The story that I heard was that Dr. Seuss was challenged by someone to write a book with only 50 words in it. And so that is the impetus for green eggs and ham, because it's very repetitive. He keeps asking the same question over and over again. Do you like green eggs and ham? Would you eat them here and there? Would you eat them anywhere? So it's the same words used over and over again, but if you count them up, it's only 50 different words.
The enthusiasm for Seuss's words was such that even though the green eggs and green ham were often too much to swallow, the children had still memorized Seuss's every line, and with wide smiles and in song, they cast out on their distaste for his wacky breakfast.
Some are thin and some are. The fat one has a yellow. From there to here, from here to there, funny things are.
Everywhere.
Just as University Park students gave Seuss's bill of fare a thumbs up, so too did those at Pointer Ridge and Samuel Chase Elementary's to the pets in Seuss's newest book, the posthumously published What Pet Should I Get? Sporting masks that made to represent their real or imaginary pets? A tiger, anyone? The children listened and laughed as Board Member Virginia Jacobs and CEO Kevin Maxwell, just like Seuss, got across that reading is both fun and fundamental to success.
She said fish, 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 like whoever over there said fish. It may be a fish. Is the pet that we wish?
Only 37% of our kids are coming to school already ready for kindergarten. And so that's another reason why it's really, really important to focus on early childhood, whether it's at home with your child sitting on the sofa next to you, or on your knee, or in the rocking chair with you, or on the floor. It's important to read to your children from the earliest age.
When kids are sitting there and we're reading to them, you also asking yourself, can they read this book? Are they able to understand what we're reading to them? Can they do it themselves? And so, on a more serious note, it's very critical that we're giving them the services and the opportunity, whether it's reading specialist, whether it's math specialist, whether it's, you know, a media specialist to help them in that journey.
So that no one was left out of Read Across America Day, the school system's technology training team staged a first-ever digital read aloud stream-a-thon. With props like plush versions of Horton, he who famously heard that who, adult readers sat in rocking chairs and read to listeners unseen but enthralled nonetheless.
Persons a person, no matter how small. You know what, Ms. Noreen, this part seems a little bit like bullying to me.
It does.
Some of the names that they called Horton.
And they're not very nice at all.
Some of the things they're saying.
I teach math and science and health, so I don't always get a chance to do something for Read Across America like that. And so I think the county's efforts to bring this to life and having the different authors come and read the stories was very, it was a wonderful idea, and the kids really did like it. The teachers did too.
The students at Barnaby Manor Elementary School were so inspired by the books they heard, they decided to write some of their own. Storyboarding like true professionals, they each drew, colored, and wrote about bullying, an all-too-common schoolhouse scourge.
It's about how a boy named Marcus responds to Jason bullying him, trying to tell him to fight him.
And what happens? Does Marcus, does he get bullied or does he stand up to the bully?
Stand up to the bully.
That's hard to do, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. Shut up, punk. Why'd you push me? Ooh, this is, this is real, this is real. Is this based on real life? Did this happen to you, Amani?
No, I just wanted to entertain people with this story that I have right there.
What's the lesson here? What are you trying to teach people?
I was trying to teach people, don't bully and like, don't be mean to other people. Treat people how you want to be treated.
Such insight, as Dr. Seuss himself might say, is worth a tip of the hat today. And it proves again that green eggs might be pretty odd eating, but taste in the end like really good reading. For TV 96 and 38, this is Dave Zimmy.
Thank you. I know we enjoyed that, but them green eggs and ham, they were good. Today, I begin my report honoring the life and memory of lost ones, including one student, Ms. Benita Nicholson, instructional lead teacher at Daweswell E. Brooks Elementary School, Ms. Fatima K. Tuna, ESOL math teacher at Green Belt Middle School. We also want to remember the victims of the tragedy in Brussels that took place today. Please join me in a moment of silence in honor of those individuals. On a lighter note and more encouraging, please join me in celebrating Mr. Curtis Valentine, who has been named Alumni of the Year by the D.C. Metro Area Chapter of the Morehouse Alumni Association. And I believe this is the first time they was able to surprise Mr. Valentine, and it was a really nice event, and congratulations, so please join me in it. Also, kudos to Laurel Elementary, which was named Prince George's County Merlin Breakfast Challenge winner for its great strides ensuring students start the day with a healthy breakfast. Representatives from the Merlin No Kid Hungry Campaign visited the school on Tuesday to present Principal Melinda Lee, staff, and students with a $1,000 cash award and a Merlin Breakfast Challenge banner to be displayed in the school. Please be mindful and diligent to stay abreast of the PGCPs calendar and any closures or early dismissal notices, all of which are posted on our PGCPs website and can be sent directly to your email or mobile device via text alerts updates. You may sign up for text alerts on our PGCPs website. I will now yield the floor to Mr. Valentine to present his committee update. I'm sorry, before that, I know, Dr. Anderson, you had a point of personal privilege that you wanted?
I'd like to share a very positive experience I had last night. I went to the park night, parent night, and, you know, when you go to meetings about tests, they're not usually interesting and exciting. But this meeting was extraordinary, and I want to share it with you. There was a plenary session, and there were some breakout sessions. The plenary session, in the plenary session, the administrators from the state, some from, Ms. Libby was, Dr. Libby was there also, from the school system, presented to the parents and gave them a very, very comprehensive overview of the park test. And what was exciting to me is that they also gave a history of the tests that we have taken, that have been given our children over the years, and how they thought this test was better. Well, when we got into the nuts and bolts of the test, it is, it seems very exciting to me. I went to a breakout session. One of the breakout sessions I went to was on elementary math. And in that session, two teachers made the presentation about how concepts and processes are presented in the math class. Had a wonderful concept presented in the math class, and very different from the way concepts are usually presented. Here's the definition, and you, so it was just the focusing on reasoning skills. And the note that they made to parents is that we're teaching consistent with how the students are going to be tested. And I had, I had, I taught mathematics for 40 years off and on, so had an idea of how you teach mathematics, but this was very exciting to me, how it was presented. And the notes that were made, and I also went to one for reading for elementary, and that one was equally exciting. I, what was most impressive to me was that the parents were given a list of things that they could do, and they were reasonable, you know? Didn't frighten them in math, and it certainly didn't frighten them in reading. So I left there saying, oh my goodness, I think these parents were exposed to something that was wonderful. So I'm bringing it in this meeting with the hope that you just tell people, if you've not attended a park session for parents, you may want to do so. It's, it turns out to be, it may turn out to be a very helpful experience for you.
Thank you. Ms. Epps?
Thank you, Ms. Boston. I just wanted to piggyback on my colleague, Dr. Anderson, and also say that I, last year, attended a park and Common Core session, and that the last park and Common Core session will be held at Laurel High School on Wednesday, April 6th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Again, April 6th, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Laurel High School. And the reason why I just want to underscore this is because there's a lot of stuff floating around on social media, sample math questions and the like, about, you know, the number of steps. And just this past Saturday, I hosted, I do morning chats in my district, and a young lady who's a PhD engineering student at the University of Maryland, I met her at the morning chat, and she talked about her volunteer work with students in math, obviously, and talked about the many steps and what a lot of parents feel like are more unnecessary steps in the younger years to reach, you know, to reach the answer for a particular math question. But one of the things that this young lady pointed out is that these steps are very intuitive and that if they master them in the elementary grades, that by the time they're introduced to algebra, the conceptual framework for it will be second nature for them. So, you know, this is something I think that, that parents will really benefit by coming out to a park and Common Core night so that they can truly understand. And again, to underscore Dr. Anderson's points, the staff really does a good job at exposing parents to, to steps that they can take to work with their students on their homework assignments, even though the math is not the same math that we did when we went through school. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. So now we will have, we'll yield the floor to Mr. Curtis Valentine to present his committee update.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Again, my name is Curtis Valentine. I'm the Chair of the Parent, Family, and Community Engagement Committee of the Board. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to orient you to the work that we're doing. Also want to recognize my fellow committee members, my Vice Chair, Ms. Pat Eubanks, fellow members, Vice Chair Carolyn Boston, Kay Alexander Wallace, Lupi Quinteros Grady, DeNora Hernandez, Sabrina Epps, and our newest member, Mary Roche. We also have Sheila Jackson is the sort of the staff liaison to our committee, and she is the Director of the Office of Family and Community Engagement. This is our general charge, and this was adopted by the Board prior to us even being, being assigned to this committee. And so, the committee is charged with the responsibility of fostering meaningful, productive relationships with parents and the community at large. Parent and community engagement is actually one of the five pillars of our strategic plan and one of the main roles of this Board. Our committee interfaces with local, state, and national legislators to keep those individuals apprised of the appropriate programmatic initiatives, new services, and accomplishments. We've adopted seven policy areas. This was at the outset of the creation of our committee areas that we wanted to, you know, concentrate our work, where we will be meeting with community members, engaging with current, identifying current policies around this, identifying areas we need to improve, whether it be through policy change or through procedures. And so, these are the areas that we've continued to work on over the last two years since I've been Chair of the Board, Chair of the Committee, excuse me. One of our functions is really to bring about, there, this is one of our function is the budget, you know, making recommendations to the Budget Committee on how to improve parental engagement, and these are the areas that we have made recommendations in the past to the Board as a committee, and that is increasing parental engagement assistance. Currently, I think there are as many as 68 or 69 in schools, and something we believe is an opportunity for us to really empower parents at the school level to become more engaged in the school and the community, also working with community partners, support to Sheila Jackson's office, the creation of the Ombudsman Office, which was created earlier last year and has been currently staffed. Dr. Newsom is here, can you raise your hand, Dr. Newsom? Thank you. We also have funding of a parent survey, and so, one of the things I mentioned a little later is that we have identified as a committee, the contractor which will facilitate a qualitative and quantitative parent survey of current, future, past, and former parents in Prince George's County to identify, you know, how they believe we can improve our school system. And then lastly, you know, support for the, a pending budget item, which is the creation of the Family Institute formerly known as the Parent University. As I mentioned earlier, this is something that we actually passed at our most recent committee meeting, which is identifying a consultant who will carry out the RIP, which we submitted earlier last year, around identifying, you know, how we can gather information from Prince Georgians, both who have children in the system, but who are just currently just residents of the county, about their perceptions of our school system, the pros and cons of our system, and actually, more importantly, how they, you know, how they determine what they like about our system, what they don't like, and then lastly, how they best receive communication. So that will entail about 600 phone surveys, but also some smaller focus groups where we have an opportunity to dig a little deeper into the perception of the school system. And so we think about what's next for our committee, it's something we'll be looking at throughout the rest of the year and the upcoming years, once the parent survey has been conducted and finalized and a report has been completed, us as a committee, you know, really analyzing that report, determining how to use that information, whether it regard to policy change, to supporting the Office of Communication, and how to create campaigns around really bringing parents and students back to the public school system. The, if, if the budget is approved with funding for the Parent Institute, how we roll out that institute, how we as Board members support that and ensure that that is successful. The effectiveness of the Ombudsman Office, something that we're also charged with supporting, but also holding accountable for their work and really advocating for parents to ensure that they are navigating our school system properly. The effectiveness of the Family and Community Engagement Committee, again, and that's a sort of byproduct of the work that Sheila Jackson is doing, but also the work of the Parent Engagement Advisors. And lastly, there are individual projects that members of our, by committee have been engaged in, particularly one I've been working on is the Fatherhood Forum. Board member Boston has a community table, and other members have various forums throughout the county where they're engaging with parents, oftentimes on a weekly or monthly basis. So as individuals, we're also working to engage parents, but as a committee, we're engaged in this work. What I also mentioned, which is not on this, is working directly with the Parent Advisory Council, and this consists of parents throughout the county who meet with myself as Vice Chair, I'm sorry, as co-chair with Board Chair, Sekul Newbanks, to bring together parents throughout the county who are advising my committee on ways to better engage with parents, better, you know, establish strong PTOs, PTSOs, and PTAs, and how to ensure that the communication between the system and our parents are strong. And so, this is the work of our committee, the Parent, Family, and Community Engagement Committee, one of the most important responsibilities of this Board. And so, I just wanted to present this to you all, and we'll be coming back to you on a regular basis to update you on the work of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a very informative committee report. Thank you for that. Put some time in that. So, okay, we have upcoming events. We have spring break, which starts March the 29th to April the 4th. Board Work Session is April the 14th. Early learning readiness is the subject for that work session. It starts at 1:00 p.m. On April the 18th, we have Board Meeting, and that starts at 7:00 p.m. Meetings of the Board will be held at the Sasa Building in the Boardroom. Persons interested in speaking at meetings of the Board must register with the Office of the Board of Education two and a half hours prior to the meeting by calling 301-952-6115. I believe, Mr. Burrows, you have something that you want to say before I close my report?
I did. It was actually, Mr. Valentine, thank you for the work that your committee is doing. I would ask that, I would love to hear some recommendations from the Family Community Engagement Committee around the process of school closures and boundaries. We need to have a process that includes our parents, that's meaningful, that's substantive, and I feel like your committee could really delve in deep and advise the Board, the Policy Committee, on a way to, to move forward in that process with some integrity.
Thank you, and I'll just briefly say, that was the topic of the last Parent Advisory Council. Towards the end of the meeting, we actually had a pretty robust conversation about how to better work with the system to ensure that we're communicating, particularly around school consolidation, so I could definitely brief you on the discussion around that committee, but that committee is bringing advice to... bringing advice to my committee as well, so I can discuss with you offline on that.
This concludes my Vice Chair's report. I will now give the floor to Dr. Maxwell for the CEO's report.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Good evening. I want to begin by thanking our county executive, Mr. Baker, for his ongoing commitment to invest in public education in Prince George's County. A budget proposal he shared last week increases the county contribution to our school district by $31.5 million over last year's amount. While it wasn't everything we asked for, it will allow us to continue to implement our work on the strategic plan and to focus on making improvements we need to provide high-quality education for all students. We know that having a great public school system will not only ensure the future success of our children, but will benefit everyone who lives and works in Prince George's County. Today, as a point of information for everyone, the State Board of Education granted our two-day waiver request for Prince George's County Public Schools. That means that Monday, June 20th, will be the last day for students, with schools dismissing two hours early on that day, and that the last day for teachers will be June 21st. Also proud to announce that our school district has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. This accomplishment was earned for the district's comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2015, and it is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. I want to congratulate our entire Business Management Services Team led by Chief Financial Officer Ray Brown, who demonstrate the professionalism, dedication, and hard work that will make us a great school district. Thank you, and congratulations, Ray, and your team. And finally, last week, 37 of our Prince George's County Public School students received the Inspiring Leadership and Excellence Award at Prince George's County Community College, and I was proud to be able to be there with them. This award was presented to high school seniors who excel in the classroom and in community service. An honor to present the students with this prestigious award. The Inspiring Leadership and Excellence Award was the first joint awards and scholarship presentation in partnership with our Prince George's County Community College. Students completed an essay. Bless you. Had a minimum of 3.5 GPA and completed 50 volunteer hours. These students will receive a combination of full and partial scholarships to Prince George's County Community College, and we again look forward to this annual event. Congratulations, once again, to all of the students. Madam, that concludes my report.
Thank you. So we now have a legislative report?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Tobias?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. You have a copy of the legislative report and Board Docs. Just as a reminder, what's included in the report is an update on the delegation, which I'll provide you verbally as well briefly in a moment, an update on the state budget, and also certain key policy initiatives, an update on our local bills, which I'll also provide for you briefly, a copy of the testimony that we submitted for you since your last board meeting, and also a summary of the statewide bills, some of the priority bills that we've been tracking, which have passed as of crossover, which was yesterday. Actually, the report that you have before you marks bills that have passed as of Friday. And things are literally changing by the day in Annapolis at this point, as we're entering the final stretch of the session, which ends on April 11th. So, just briefly, for the county delegation update, just wanted to remind you all that Dr. Maxwell is going to be presenting to our Senate delegation on tomorrow morning at 11:30. We're looking, we're looking forward to our opportunity to dialogue more with our senators tomorrow. They have been, really haven't had as much interaction with that chamber as we have with the House, because there haven't been any local bills pending with the Senate. But we certainly will provide some important updates for them tomorrow, and wanted to make everyone aware of that meeting. For local bills, we had, if you recall, initially six or seven local bills filed impacting the school system specifically. I am pleased to announce that we did support one of them, which would have, we oppose a lot, but we did support one of them, which would have created a task force to study a Promise Scholarship Program in our county, which would have looked at basically filling the gap when students are going to Prince George's Community College, and they've applied for financial aid, but they're still expected to contribute money, and they can't afford to do that. How do you help those kids stay in school? We love that idea, and we certainly supported that bill. But the others, for various reasons, which you have in your packet, we did oppose, and none of those bills have moved forward. We are continuing our discussions with the legislators in terms of work over the summer, additional information they would like. We have several policies that are going to be coming before your Policy Committee between now and the next session. So, there's going to be a lot of work in the interim, but we are at least pleased that our positions were heard, and none of those local bills are going to be moving forward this session. You do have before you three bills, however, that the Policy Committee voted for final board action that I wanted to bring to your attention this evening. Initially, there were five, but as I said earlier, literally, things are changing by the day, and two of those bills are no longer in play. And I'll explain which ones those are for you. One bill was our remaining local bill. It's PG 440, HB 1486. This would have created a transportation work group between our county, excuse me, our school system, the county government, and WAMADA. And among other things, it would be looking at ways to reduce transportation costs for the school system by considering possibly consolidating routes with WAMADA or the county, or just looking at any number of ways we can increase transportation efficiency. It also sought to look at ways that we can better use technology and up-to-date software and kind of best-known business practices in this industry to reduce costs and increase efficiencies. But we opposed it because, as you know, there's a system-wide audit that's taking place right now across all of our major divisions, but the Transportation Department is a significant part of that audit review. And it's going to be looking at route, transportation routing, and standard operating procedures, and the kind of software that we use, and what's been done since the last state audit, and what hasn't, and why. And it's, there's going to be a deep dive into all of that information. And so, our recommendation was to halt any further work groups, interim reports, anything like that until we can get that work done. That bill was going to be heard tomorrow at County Affairs, but that meeting has been canceled, that hearing has been canceled. So, that bill is no longer before you for a final action this evening. Canceled is good for us, by the way. That's good for us, okay? The second bill that we've kind of taken off the list for you was Senate Bill 950, which was also cross-fired with HB 778. This was one of the larger special education bills pending this session. It would have given parents a veto right, essentially, in IEP or Individualized Education Plan Team Decisions regarding their children. And there were, there were several concerns that we had with the bill as drafted in terms of the way that it would impact the professional judgment of the IEP team, and the fact that we are still being held accountable for a very serious standard under federal law. However, that version of the bill is no longer in play. What passed the Senate this weekend now creates a work group. So, it's no longer a mandate on school systems, it's not changing the legal standard, it's not doing essentially anything that the initial bill sought to do. But instead, MSD would lead a work group over the summer and fall. It would be due in November. School systems would be able to weigh in, as would a lot of the stakeholders, about ways to increase parent engagement, you know, parent authority, looking, you know, at the ins and outs as to whether or not this type of bill would really be feasible as a legal matter. It's going to be important work, and we just, we really did not believe that because the bill is no longer in the original form, that we needed to bring that to you for an opposition. So, we have just, we have just taken it off the list for you this evening. So, the three bills that remain for a vote, quickly. The first is HB 1184. This is a bill by Delegate Angel. It is to establish a work group that would study the effect of poverty on the behavioral health of children. The Policy Committee's recommendation is to support this bill, and part of the discussion that just went into the reason for support, you know, kind of the theme of the, part of the themes of the comments were, it's not that just low-income children have behavioral issues. That's not the point. But, but what the bill is seeking to do is to further explore this emerging research that basically shows that children who live in kind of constant, stressful, really high-needs environments often start to exhibit the types of symptoms, and, yeah, symptoms that look very similar to PTSD and other type of mental, mental challenges that may be misdiagnosed as ADHD, for example. So, you might have kids that are being over-medicated or over kind of diagnosed or identified as being behavioral issues, but maybe there's something, there's something different there. So, this work group is looking to explore that with education representatives, health representatives, et cetera. And the Committee's recommendation was to, was to support, was to support that bill. Do you want, Madam Vice Chair, do you want me to stop at each bill, or would you prefer me to just finish all three and then take a motion, however you wish? Okay, okay. The second bill is HB 1228. It was cross-fired with Senate Bill 832. This concerns, the title was Grounds for Discipline. And essentially, what it does is it adds a whole new way to deal with employee appeals whenever they're recommended for termination, okay? Under existing law, under your existing procedures, if an employee who holds a certificate is recommended for termination for cause, they are able to appeal. You have a hearing officer or a bank of hearing officers who will help you to hold these hearings. The recommendations come to you for a final decision, and if they're dissatisfied with that decision, the employee can then appeal to the State Board of Education. What this bill would do would be, would be to create an entirely different method of appeal where a, an arbitrator outside of the school system could hear the appeal. It does not come back to the Board, it does not go to the State Board. The arbitrator's decision would be final and binding and appealable to Circuit Court. The proponents of the bill argue that it was needed to deal, among other things, with what they consider to be partiality among local board hearing officers. There was a concern about backlog and time that it takes for some of these hearings to take place. There was also some assertion that certain classes of employees may already have this right in their collective bargaining agreement, so essentially should level the playing field and allow everybody to have this right. However, the administration recommended to the Policy Committee, and they agreed, to oppose the bill because, for a couple of reasons. One, we think it's very important to resist and to push back against the notion that you can't get a fair hearing before a local Board of Education. And in fact, in a way, it's almost a little disingenuous to criticize the Board for paying for hearing officers, because if we, if we required employees to pay for their own hearing officers, that would create a much bigger problem, if you can imagine. The hearing officers have a job to do, they submit their findings to you. You are not beholden to those findings. You make your decision on the record. If the employee is dissatisfied with that, there is a separate right of appeal to the State Board of Education, who is also not beholden to your findings. And then ultimately, there's the appeal to Circuit Court. That's an important point that we wanted to make. And additional point that came up in the discussion is the fact that there would also be a different standard under the arbitrator's review. So, the arbitrator could, for sufficient cause, change the sanction, overturn it, do something totally different. That does not come back to the Board. That decision is final, it's binding. And we are concerned about the impact that that has on your authority and your oversight over, over the school system employees. So, for those reasons, we are recommending that you oppose the bill. And then lastly, there, to end on a good note, there's a bill, SB 367, HB 862, which is kind of affectionately called the Bottle Bill. This is a bill to really significantly reduce pollution in the state, and it's, you don't often have environmentally related bills before you, but this was one that came to us upon request, and when we looked at the information that was provided, it was very interesting. For example, the state estimated, estimates that there are approximately 4.8 billion beverages sold in containers, containers each year in the state. Billion. Of that, our county contributes about, well, based on the last report, the school system had, because of how large we are, truly, you know how our environmental footprint in the county, we have the highest rate of some waste that was delivered to the landfill in millions and millions of containers just countywide, not just us, that are, that are just left in the environment. There's a program that has existed in about 10 states over the last 40 years, and essentially, it's a, it's a five-cent refundable deposit program. It's almost like the reverse vending machine where people can, can, you know, bring their old water bottles, Coke cans, whatever, and redeem them in this machine for, for a deposit or a refund. They have said that in states where they have these kind of recycling programs in place, the rate of recycling has been like three times higher than anywhere else in the county, excuse me, anywhere else in the country. So, there's just a real push towards making moves like this, which will help to reduce really our environmental footprint and significantly bring down the level of waste and litter in our, in our communities. So, the Policy Committee has recommended supporting this bill, not only for the reasons that I just mentioned, but it also aligns with the work that our school system is already doing. For example, we revamped our recycling program in January of this year with an overall goal of increasing our recycling rates and decreasing the amount of trash that we send to the landfills. So, this is certainly in line with the move of the system, and we are recommending your support of the bill. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Do I have any discussions here? Ms. Perry?
First, I want to say thank you so much for the work that you do.
You're welcome.
And I, I was looking over, can you hear me?
Yes.
I was looking over House Bill 1184, the work group to study the effect of poverty on the behavioral health of children. And I actually was just talking to a few of my constituents about this, and I really, really hope that this passes through. I know it's in the House now, so it has yet to go to the Senate, correct?
It has not, it has not passed the House yet. That's correct.
It hasn't passed yet.
Right.
But I just want to voice publicly my support for this bill. Oh, and one question. When is the hearing, do you know?
Oh, it was already held. Hearing was already held. So, so crossover was yesterday. So, that's the day by when, by which the House has to, whatever, the House of origin has to pass favorably the bills, generally. There are some exceptions where bills may pass late and kind of be held in the Rules Committee for some, for some time, but a majority of the bills generally had to have passed by yesterday.
Do you know when it'll be heard in the Senate, or is that not?
It may not, it may not be heard in the Senate unless it, if it gets passed and gets held in Rules and actually makes it out of that process, then there would be a scheduled hearing in the Senate, but right now, there is not one. So, a purpose of our support would be to have some information in the, the support decision was made before crossover, you know, just with the timing of the meetings, it's hard to get some of these things finalized, but we wanted our support, if approved by the Board, to be in the record.
Thank you also. I just want to join my colleague, Ms. Perry, in supporting HB 1184, the, to study the effect of poverty on behavioral health. I think it comes at a very good time, as the state is looking at its state funding formula and in the Thornton Commission, and how to re-figure the funding formula to maybe take into account some of these issues of poverty, so that when it comes down to Prince George's County schools and other places in the County schools and other places in the state, we get more funding for resources that our kids need. So, and the other point is I, I love to see this inter-agency collaboration, the health and education, the more we can talk to each other at the, the state level, the better we're off at the local level, too.
Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Ms. Boston. I was just going to put a motion on the floor to accept the recommendations of the Policy Committee and also the report from Mr. Tobias for approval. All three bills at once and then open for discussion.
Second. Thank you. Second. Any further discussion? Ms. Hopkins, can you call a roll, please?
Dr. Anderson? Mr. Burrows? Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Hernandez? Ms. Jacobs? Aye. Ms. Quinteros-Grady?
Aye.
Ms. Roche? Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
That's 13. Thank you. We have nine registered speakers for public comment to speak on non-agenda items. We have one agenda item person, but they declined to, to speak. So we're going to move right on to the non-agenda items. You must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. The Board will not address the comments. At the sound of the buzzer, you may complete that sentence only. You may not relinquish any part of your speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. You are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, board member, CEO, executive director, et cetera. Please leave a copy of your statement in the foul box located next to the microphone. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public comment process to move smoothly. Thank you. The first person is Kamaya Gillerson.
Good evening. My name is Kamaya Gillerson, and I'm here tonight to support the renewal of my school, CMIT North and Forestville High School. Although the CEO has decided to close Forestville and Skyline, I'm asking that this is not to happen. Forestville is a small community school that has so much positive, positivity surrounding it. However, the children there are starting to be sad because they are fearing the worst. Forestville has so many deserving children who call this school home and feel safe here. Why would a dramatic decision like this be made without the students and staff being involved? Can you imagine how they feel not knowing what is next and it's nothing that they can do about it? My cousin is a current junior at Forestville, and at the beginning of this school year, she was excited about becoming a senior next year. Now she's not excited and is depressed. Quite frankly, she's not the only one. There are a lot of students who feel this way. What can you do to help them? Why do you have to close the school without warning or proper preparation? I was in tears when I saw the Channel 9 news story on the Forestville Lady Knights basketball team after they won state championships back-to-back. I encourage you all to check it out if you haven't seen it. It is heartbreaking to hear about how one of the young ladies were taken in so that she could stay focused on her schoolwork and athletics because she wasn't getting the support at home. Fortunately for her, she was, she was, have a very happy ending to her high school career. However, do you know how many other students need this family environment to stay on track? Students have expressed fear for being lost in such a big school. Also, I would like to note that the other two seniors on the girls' basketball team received scholarships as well. In a letter from the CEO that was sent home with students, he stated that he wanted the best for the children of Prince George's County Public School System. That reminded me of the testimonies of Forestville students, teachers, alumnus, and others that care about this school and wants the best for these children. Please take into consideration that this is more than a school. It is a family and nurturing environment for a lot of students who don't get that at home. Please do all you can to help these schools stay open.
Kenneth Smith?
Good evening to everyone. Once again, I'm up here to be an advocate for the kids at Forestville Military Academy slash, I guess, high school. I'm heartbroken to know that you're pretty much going to do what you want to do anyway. But as a parent and being an advocate for the kids is, where do we give them? In, in the pledge of allegiance, we say injustice for all. Where do we give the kids justice? Where do we say, well, have you ever thought about just switching it back to all military? There are solutions for situations that we go through. And then we want to know why our kids turn out to act and be the way they are when we shut them down as adults and we don't give them opportunity to close the school down? And I just got a disturbing phone call that's saying that there is a possibility, and I hope it's just a rumor, that the school may be closed and open up for casino training facility. I hope that is not true. And, again, where do we show our kids that we care? When we shut them down and, and, and say, well, we're just going to close the school and forget about it, you don't look at the stress that it put them through, the mental health issues that it is causing our kids. It's, I talked to some of the kids in the neighborhood, and they say, it's fine, as just long as you don't go live on the south side of town. That is devastating to hear from kids tell you, and they saying that they don't care about us. Why should we even take a chance on doing anything when we, as adults, show them we don't care? And to close the school and just not look at another avenue? Look at something else that we could do as far as just shutting it down and say, well, it's a money issue. We always want to put a dollar bill on something, and then when a disaster happens, we want to apologize. Me, I'm one that don't accept, I'm sorry, when, when I know that something could be done to stop this. And I'm asking you, rescind it. It doesn't take much to do. It takes, I'm just, I'm really disturbed by this. I'm heartbroken to see a young lady get up here and spill her heart out. And what do we do? We show them that, again, we don't care. And then when we show them we don't care, what happens? They turn out to be like the Ford Brothers, which we don't want.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
I'm asking you to just rescind the thought.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Harley, and I came tonight as a parent of a CMIT North student, and I am in support of the renewal of that school. They have outstanding program, and I wish that the southern part of the county could have programs like that. And I, I think that that would help with the overcrowding on the northern side. That's my opinion. But, and on another thought, I came to ask that the consolidation of Forestville be rescinded because it's, hasn't been properly forecasted or implemented, and none of the Forestville current students can apply for the four-year programs at Sutland. The juniors can't apply for the two-year programs either. Although the deadline has been extended for the sophomores and freshmen to apply, what measure, what measures will be put in place so that they can get into these programs? Do you realize that Forestville students being forced to go to Sutland is traumatic for them? Do you know how Forestville students have come to me pleading for help because they are fearful for their lives and well-being? The students affectionately call me Ms. Kim and weekly ask, are we going to be able to stay at our school? We are safe here. We don't want to get hurt or lost in that big school. We love, we are loved at Forestville. The teachers care, and we need that. Some of us come from broken homes, and Forestville is all we have. Students have already been hurt and senselessly murdered because of neighborhood rivalries and employees of the Prince George's County Public School System. So I'm asking that the newly established Student Safety Task Force create and implement an, an initiative to ensure that all students will remain safe if these schools are consolidated. Dr. Maxwell, in his March 16 letter to parents, please be assured that I will continue to do everything in my power to keep our children safe, and that is my promise and commitment to our students, parents, and guardians, and the Prince George's County community. So I'm sure he would agree that this is the right thing to do. Please don't let anything else bad or detrimental happen to our precious and vulnerable children while in your care when it could have been avoided. I'm asking that proactive measures be taken to ensure our children will remain safe. It has been stated that Prince George's County security officials will be moving into Forestville High School. We have been advocating for programs to be implemented in our school. Why can't the county create a law enforcement program at Forestville and have the security officials housed there instead of closing this school? This school has so much value for the neighborhood as well as the past and present students. It's quite disturbing to attend a Board of Education facilitated meeting at Skyline Elementary where their parents were allowed to talk to counselors and ask questions and get answers, but Forestville students were not allowed that.
Erin Lovelli? Lovelli?
You better write.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I realize I'm a month late to this conversation, but it's just getting ramped up back in District Three in, in Mount Rainier. So in the coming weeks, I think you're going to hear a lot of foot stomping and loud voices about this issue with the, with the boundary lines and the school utilization. I spent Sunday, three hours reading the, the master plan. I wish that on nobody, but it, I will say that this, this, this group and this body here had the foresight to, to do that, and there's a lot of good information in there. So I'll, I have this in writing. I'll just quickly bullet through, and I won't go into detail. But when the time comes next year, when you guys pick this back up again, I would just ask that the, the body be transparent in doing this, that they engage the community in this, that they're reasoned in their approach, really looking at solutions that go beyond arbitrary lines, that they're strategic. Again, going back to the master plan, there was never the intent of the, of the consulting firm to separate out utilization rates from the larger, the other issues that are part of that plan. They say it right in the beginning. And then focus on the problem. I think our politicians that are trying to get the community amped up about this are starting to divide the community, and they spent five minutes thinking about the problem and 55 minutes thinking about the solution. And they really should have flipped that. So i- it's a shame that, that they did that. And I would just say be long-term oriented. I mean, in looking at what we can do with, with these schools over, over in Mount Rainier, it really, the sky's the limit. And I think the community honestly believes that. It's, it's really, it's a community that comes together behind these sort of things, as they always have. So I would just say, again, think, think long-term. And then in terms of the, the kind of the, this talking point that everybody's throwing out about Mount Rainier Elementary being underutilized and Thomas Stone being overutilized, overutilized does not equal undereducated. I think that's a disservice when they say that to our teachers, and it's, it's a slap in the face to them. So I'll leave these remarks here, and that's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members and PG CPS colleagues. As I reflect on what it means to be a great by-choice leader in a time of crisis, or in a time where, as a school system, we're working on being great by choice, struck by 10 qualities, and five of them, I would not wish them upon anybody. In fact, I would say jettison them as fast as possible. The first is shouting at professional colleagues not once but twice, banging on tables in anger not once but twice, rather than composing oneself and seeking the truth. Sabotaging a colleague with lies and deceit as if you're watching your favorite episode of House of Cards. Character assassination through inner windows and falsehoods behind someone's back without being able to state the lies in a legal setting. Verbal assault, not once but twice, without taking a breath to hear what your colleague is saying. I have faced this type of barrage as an immigrant who came to this country and this state and this county over the past seven years, and especially the last two years, which has been incredibly interesting in this county. But I look to the Bible quite a bit, as I've shared with you many times, and Psalm 23 is the biggest one that helps me get through that kind of, kind of workplace bullying is what I call it. And I stand here as an example to my own children, who are PG CPS students, as well as any youth member who is a PGS, PG CPS student, as well as a leader, that do not, do not stand down in the face of bullying of any nature. So it says that even though I walk through the dark side valley, I'll fear no evil. You prepare table before me in the presence of my enemies. And I think it's saying that justice delayed is not justice denied. But there are five qualities of a leader that strike me as positive. Courage, to stand out and do the right thing even when everyone else is hiding. Integrity, not to make things up to cover fraud, waste, abuse, or discrimination. Tenacity, to never give up, not only on the goodness of the Lord, but the goodness of people. Determination, to reach the goal line, to finish the race that the Lord put you on. And forgiveness, even in the face of pure evil, because vengeance is not yours, but it is the Lord's. And as Pastor Jenkins Church had a witness last Sunday, and I was really struck by this witness, her name was Ms. Mathis, and she said, "Lord, I'm not asking you to ease the burden of evil and struggle in this world because you promised that you will never give us a burden that we cannot bear, but rather give us the grace to bear it with dignity." And so to all young people, stand up in the face of bullying. Stand up in the face of workplace bullying. Do not stand down, because the future is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Sims?
Good evening, Vice Chair and members of the Board. My letter and speech tonight is actually to Dr. Maxwell and his staff. But I need to correct myself in something that I did earlier this week. Today I have to woman up and correct myself. Dr. Maxwell, in my last correspondence, I indicated that there was no reference to Army JROTC, and I was incorrect. I correct myself today. While there is reference, it is not the information that I was seeking to compare items completed on the Navy JROTC platform. I am hopeful that I will see that information very soon. The reason I reviewed several locations, and that is Fairmont Heights and Parkdale, is because they now house Army JROTC programs, and they are the only other two besides Forestville Military Academy. The cadets at Forestville stand losing their rank if they enrolled in any other JROTC program. That gave me that nagging feeling of, again, and I asked, what are we really doing? This is the question I have for you this evening. First, I will explain why I am asking this question. It is my understanding that potential future occupants of Forestville could possibly be a training center for MGM employees. Then I understand it could be a new location for the Prince George's County Public School Security Department. If either or both are accurate, how much space? If either or both are accurate, how much space is really needed? I am aware of the possibility that Prince George's Community College will be hosting training for MGM and possibly another site. How many sites are really needed? I thought the revenue from MGM was to capture, to improve our schools, not have us evicted. I cannot let the enrollment numbers at Forestville be the foundation of your decision, as there are many others that reflect the same. Then I looked at the normal and customary staffing and the mobile units that are located at the back of the building, I believe this building, and I said, "I cannot visualize an abundance of space is needed to move that group." Therefore, I respectfully ask, retain Forestville Military Academy in the existing building. By doing this, you will allow the Military Academy to graduate the existing cadets and maintain our accreditation as a Military Academy until we can truly advise the stakeholders of Prince George's County of this excellent program.
Thank you, Ms. Sims.
You are more than welcome, Vice Chair.
Sheldon Dean? Sheldon Dean? LaShawn Jackson?
Good evening, everyone. I would first like to express my sympathy to my friend, the CEO, Dr. Maxwell. I'm regretful that you hold a position that requires such harsh decision-making. I'm sure that your appointment to CEO was not an effort to cause negative scrutiny upon you, which labels you as the bad guy. I trust that the county executive only wants the best for the county, but I don't believe he was fully aware of the impact HB 1107 would cause. Nonetheless, many constituents have spoken to you politically, professionally, and/or passionately in regards to the consolidation of Forestville High School, and you have not even given a partial comforting smile. As a parent, it concerns me that our children's well-being is not your top priority. I've heard much rumor mill about the plans for Forestville High School's facility, and at this point, I don't care about the business that is planned. I care about the fact that you've decided to move forward with your plans to consolidate Forestville High School and mess up the plans for my biggest investment, my child. This plan cancels the most important high school year of her life. It's really unfair that your decision has been instrumental in the depreciation of quality of life for my family, along with so many thousands of other people. In case you don't understand what I mean, let me help you. Since the news of your decision to consolidate schools, my 11th grader has threatened to end life. That may not be serious to you, but it has truly impacted my life on a daily basis, and if there is anyone in this room who knows my name, they can attest to this. Forestville High School 11th graders, rising seniors are feeling like this is the end of the world. On a day-to-day basis, I have banged my head on the wall with what's next. I've been unhappy, unproductive, and most importantly, consistently seeking answers and guidance. I've sent you emails that you've not replied to, and I won't mention how you rudely walked away from another parent and I, showing no compassion to our concerns. I don't understand how they selected someone to be the CEO of the Board of Education to make final decisions for 129,000 students, who doesn't even seem to have a smidgen of passion. If I'm an error, I apologize. If not, I still apologize, and I'd like to pray for you. Dear God, I ask that you touch Dr. Maxwell, Rush Sharon Baker, Dr. Eubanks, and every board member of the Board of Education. I ask that you do your will in each one's life and scream in their ears, resend the consolidation, until they can hear nothing other than those words. Plaster those words on their tongues and on their hearts and force them to speak out the words. Speak them out loud. Resend the decision of consolidation, canceling the closure of Forestville High School and Skyline Elementary. God, I pray that you move on Forestville High School and Skyline Elementary students' behalf. I pray that Prince George's County Board of Education will consist of finances that accommodate state-of-the-art educational and extracurricular programs, highly qualified staff, and passionate board members, which will attract every human being in the United States of America. God, please lean your ear to my cry and answer this prayer expeditiously. In your precious Son Jesus' name I pray, amen. Thank you, Jesus, and thank you, board, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Ryan Smith?
I got to follow that. Okay, this is an explanation to the previous speaker's issue. I'm speaking on behalf of a group of the Mount Rainier and Thomas Stone PTOs, and the issue is school boundaries. And we wanted to make you aware of our concern and introduce it into the public record. Now, Thomas Stone and Mount Rainier Elementarys are six blocks away from each other, yet Thomas Stone is at overcapacity by just under 200 students, while Mount Rainier School is under-enrolled. The Thomas Stone largely serves children from rental apartment complexes, while Mount Rainier largely serves standalone homeowners. Now, we would like to move the boundary from Mount Rainier Elementary to include more apartment students and also more students of homeowners in the historically traditional African-American town of North Brentwood. Now, the second group of children currently has to walk around the Mount Rainier District on a longer route to Thomas Stone Elementary. Now, this is a non-budgetary change that can make Mount Rainier Elementary School more financially efficient and alleviate the overcrowding at Thomas Stone Elementary and reduce the stress on their faculty, staff, the children, and their parents, as well as correct inequalities in our communities. Now, we've been in contact with both principals, the mayors of the towns involved, County Council Member Ms. Traveras, Board Member Hernandez, and John Dell Jones Brown at the People Accounting and Boundaries, and everyone has expressed interest in support of our issue. We hope that you as well will support us and help us to implement this change. We understand there is a process for this change, and we know that the boundary change issues will be worked on in December, and we would appreciate working with all the officers involved, such as the CEO, until then, so that we can rectify this inequality at that time. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. With that complete public comment, we move on to Item 4.0 Discussion. See, we have anything for that, so we go right on to 5.0, which is Consent Agenda. I would now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for introductions of Items 5.1 through 5.7 under the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Boston, members of the board. Items 5.1 through 5.7 require board approval of the following proclamations in Observing Mathematics Awareness Month, Earth Day, and National Autism Awareness Month, approval of a permit for the St. James Phase, and approval of an annual stormwater maintenance agreement.
May I have a motion to approve Items 5.1 through 5.7 under the Consent Agenda? It has been properly moved to second that the Board of Education approves Items 5.1 through 5.7 under Consent Agenda. All those in favor? I'm sorry. Okay?
Just a comment regarding the proclamation for Observance of Mathematics Awareness Month. I was very pleased to see that a list of recommendations was given to the schools on what could be done during Mathematics Observance Month, and I thank you for that.
That's it. Mr. Wallace?
Like my colleague, Dr. Anderson, I want to comment on just one thing. I see we are observing National Autism Awareness Month, and as my colleagues know, one of the schools that was consolidated was Skyline Elementary School, and a lot of the students in that school have autism. And I just want to publicly thank the administration for hosting a parent-town hall meeting at Skyline Elementary where I attended, and a lot of my constituents and the community members impacted, attended, and I believe that the conversations that were had there were informative and impactful, and I look forward to further conversations with those administrators and those parents going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any more buzzes going off. Okay, it has properly moved and second that the Board of Education approves Items 5.1 through 5.7 under the Consent Agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and Items 5.1 through 5.7 under Consent Agenda are approved. I will now move on to Item 6.0. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of Items 6.1 through 6.9 under Budget Consent Agenda.
Thank you.
Student Board Member, can I vote on this? Correct? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston, members of the board. Items 6.1 to 6.9 require board approval of the following: An increase in the number of authorized permanent positions for fiscal year 2016, expenditure requirements for April 2016, a four-inch water meter vault, a final acceptance and payment for work at Frederick Douglass High School, Carroll and Highlands Elementary School, Chapel Forge Early Childhood Center, Buck Lodge Middle School, and Apple Grove Elementary School, as well as a contract for professional auditing services for the annual financial statement audit.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve Items 6.1 through 6.9 under the Budget Consent Agenda? A second? Any discussions? I see one. Ms. Jacobs?
I just had a quick question about 6.1. So I know it says it has no budget implications, which typically might mean it doesn't increase the budget, but it, even though it's in there, what would be, what's the dollar amount that would be associated with that full-time position?
The total grant is $30.7 million. It's a special education grant that we see funding for, but they authorized a specialist for the Infants and Toppers Program, and if we were to fill that position, it would exceed our total authorized positions as approved by the board, so we have to come to you to get authority for that FT in order to fill that position that's authorized to the grant.
Right. I understood that part. Well, I guess my question is, but, so what would, what would the budget implication be for that once it's, we approve?
It's funded, it's just that we didn't have the authorized position that was added to the grant.
Okay. So is there a dollar amount associated with it, or that comes with the, once you hire the person, it would be based on the salary?
It's a specialist position that's embedded in the total funding for the grant.
Okay.
And the specialist position is anywhere from $80,000 to $85,000.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Okay.
My question is along the same lines as that topic, 6.1. Can you give us a little bit more information about this position and where in the budget will it impact? And will it be funded next year?
Then the Infants and Toppers Program is special. Education is a restricted grant program. The total, the total grant for that program overall, for A, B, C, and D, any Infants and Toppers program is over $30.7 million. Embedded within the grant, MSD authorized an additional position to support Infants and Toppers, but we didn't have position authority. So this is simply asking the board to increase the position authority in order to fill the position, the funding is there, embedded within the grant.
But if I were to look in the budget, what page would, would that, or what department would that be in?
It's in the restriction, in the appendix of the budget and the restricted programs part.
And next year, is it going to be funded under, through a grant, or is it going to be funded through us?
Yes.
How long is this grant?
It's an annual, annual grant, it's a federal grant.
Okay. So we can expect?
Yes.
Next year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And a year after. And a year after that.
Seeing no more. It has been properly moved to second that the Board of Education approves Items 6.1 through 6.9 under the Budget Consent Agenda. Ms. Hopkins, please call and roll.
Dr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Burrows? Ms. Epps? Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs? Ms. Quinteros-Grady? Ms. Roche? Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks?
Okay, that moves us on to 7.0.
That's 12 ayes.
I'm sorry.
That's 12 ayes and one absent.
Okay, so that moves us on to 7.0 NonConsent Agenda, and we have nothing there. So that moves us to 8.0. I would now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of Items 8.2 and 8.3 under the Governance Second Reader Unfinished Business Agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Boston, members of the board. These two are for your approval of board policies, 169260.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. It has been properly moved to second that the Board of Education approves Items 8.2 and 8.3 under the Governance Second Reader Unfinished Business Agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and Items 8.2 and 8.3 under the Consent Agenda is approved. So that moves us on to 9.0. I'll yield the floor, Dr. Maxwell, for introductions from 9.1 to 9.13 over the new business first readers.
Thank you, Ms. Boston, members of the board. There are 9.1 through 9.13 are first readers, and as such, require no discussion by the board.
Colleagues, we are now at the point of accepting Items 9.1 through 9.13 under the new business as the first reader. No discussion is necessary. May I have a motion to accept 9.1 through 9.13 under the new business as first reader? Second? Another second? Okay, it's been properly moved to second that the Board of Education accepts 9.1 through 9.13 under the new business as a first reader. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and Items 9.1 through 9.13 have been accepted as the first reader. So 12.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
I buzzed in. I wanted to ask the administration to bring Mr. Reda White or someone from the Charter Office out for our next meeting as we discuss the potential renewal of CMIT.
Yes, sir. I think, I think she's here tonight, actually, just in case, but we'll have her here at the next meeting as well. She loves coming here, as we all do.
And we'd love to see her. Just wanted to discuss sort of the evaluation and recommendation, what the recommendation was and what that was based on, that's all. But we can, you can either send it to me offline, or we can appear between now and then to discuss that, that's all.
Okay. So we have 11.0, we have no follow-up items to be discussed. 12.0, Motion to Approve Actions Taken in Executive Session. Second? Little second? Who was it? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? May I have a motion to, to adjourn? All those oppose? Mean it's officially adjourned.